Y'all ready to go? It is 10:10. I call the meeting back to order. Uh, this is number 28. Presentation and discussion on light and heavy manufacturing zoning classifications. The city council's role as pertains to such classifications and processes, specifically as it relates to the proposed sand transloading facility on Hill Street. And I did ask that this be placed on the agenda, so that we could just kind of air this out, so the people knows exactly where we are and where we're coming from. Charlotte did also ask for it, and someone else had asked for it. So, this is on there, so that we can talk about it. I'm gonna have you, Patrick, kind of make a presentation of what you have done, is to give the city's viewpoint on this. I think Lee Fluger has a presentation I'd like to leave and make his after you get through, and then we will open it up for public comment. So, uh, kind of the format I'd like to follow if everybody approves of that. Uh, let's get started with you, buddy.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, good morning, Mayor, members of city council. This is item number 28, which is an overview of light and heavy manufacturing and allowed uses therein. Just an outline. So, we'll start with the background analysis. The key point of this slide is to suggest that the state enabling legislation allows for cities to create a comprehensive plan, and that's, uh, and zoning additionally. And that's chapters 211 and 213 respectively of the local code of the code. The idea for zoning is to really promote orderly growth and development. Without zoning, there are cities that do not have zoning. It is more of a challenge to provide for orderly growth and development, protecting the interests of individual property owners while looking at the best use of land and protecting the health, safety, and morals of the general welfare. And so, essentially, that is what zoning is intent when cities adopt zoning ordinances, and this is adopted by city council. So, just a little bit more about what zoning regulates. You talked about height, height of buildings, the bulk of buildings, the percentage of the lot which buildings can cover, the size of yards, and all the list you see here before you. Okay, and this slide shows the different zoning designations. R and E is, uh, Ranching Estates, and then it will go down to the bottom, which is light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing, which is the subject of this discussion today. Okay, so as it relates to light manufacturing, just about what the overall intended light manufacturing is, is to provide opportunities for businesses in the processing, manufacturing, storage, and service industries, which are characterized by relatively low nuisance and minimally adverse neighboring properties. Additionally, heavy manufacturing provides opportunity for processing and manufacturing that may in fact be inherently noxious. However, those, there are standards put in place to protect the citizenry as well. But, uh, heavy manufacturing is likely to have those type of noxious and dangerous materials. So, as it relates to the allowed uses, however, within levy, light, I'm sorry, in heavy manufacturing, the major distinction between light and heavy manufacturing is the idea of manufacturing production as a use in the heavy designation. And so, I'll explain a little bit more, but again, the ma- major difference between the two zoning classifications is the allowance in heavy manufacturing, to do manufacturing and production of heavy use. So, we'll talk a little bit about the Hill Street property. Uh, everyone's aware of where it's located. There is a railroad that traverses the west side of the property. Um, it's been there since the 1800s. There are neighborhoods obviously to the far outside of the railroad tracks of the east side, and actually neighborhoods on the west side as well of the property. And that was, that area was in 1995. As you can see, in 2011, not much has changed with the subject property. Actually, those neighborhoods still remain intact. Um, the area primarily is still primarily vacant. Has been industrially zoned, light manufacturing, since the zoning ordinance was adopted by city council in 2000. So, a little bit about the subject property. It's 5.5 acres. It's own light manufacturing, as I mentioned. To the west is a railroad, and to the east is Hill Street, and it's primarily vacant. And so, here you can see, actually, the neighboring zoning classifications. The applicant, or the property owner, I should say, is proposing to transload goods. In this case, the goods are sand. The use category that we've determined to fall within is warehouse and freight movement, and I'll talk about that later on. And with respect to hazardous materials and waste, he has indicated that there aren't any. Zoning district is light manufacturing. So, a little bit about warehouse and freight, which is, this was a determination that we made as a staff. It talks about storage or movement of goods themselves. It talks about the idea of occasional pickups, but primarily the storage and movement of materials. Note that the production of materials, however, which is another zoning classification, uh, used within the classification of light manufacturing, I'll mention later on. Some of the examples provided were truck and air freight terminals, gasoline and patrol product terminals, freight forwarding services, stockpiling of sand, gravel, and the like. And what I've done for members of the audience and the council is I've provided some excerpts from the zoning ordinance. So, there are, these items are obviously contained within the zoning ordinance. So, for those that are looking for that, this is, there's a packet that should be circulated around for those who want it. So, here are some concerns that were expressed directly to me with respect to the potential use of the property for transloading of the sand. One was the traffic. We wanted to mention that the streets, um, that to the east side of the property, those local streets of G, H, I, J, and K, between Hill Street and Irving, do you have signage that does prohibit heavy truck traffic? Staff is inclined to believe that we potentially could post similar signage on the west side of the property to discourage, also discourage truck traffic traversing the neighborhood. And so, with the installation of the signage, enforcement could pursue, and we are suggesting that that would be some means of minimizing the traversing of trucks through the neighborhood. However, there are signage, there is signage again to the east of the property. There was some discussion about TCQ and how they view the property. There is a permit that is generally required in certain cases. However, in this case, TCQ, and I'm sorry they couldn't be here today, Greg Dadeheim, the local officer of TCQ, he had another appointment, so he wasn't able to be here with us today. However, they determined that Rule 30, Act 106, 148, did authorize the use of the activity that was being proposed. I also have a copy of that in the, in the packet that is being circulated. And so, that those requirements, environmental requirements, will be monitored by TCQ, and they have determined the, that the activity is, would be allowed on the site without the ensuing permit. And this is a copy of the code. This is the same thing, again, is in your packet, Rule 106, 148. So, what is, having my attention in many cases of this, they're quotes making reference to some of the language within the manufacturing, production, use category within light manufacturing. And so, I wanted to make a comparison between what we've determined to be allowed within, which is warehouse and freight, versus the manufacturing and production. So, with respect to nuisances and how those are addressed, um, warehouse and freight does not allow for those waste-related uses primarily, but those that are allowed would be allowed via conditional use, and then there are some performance standards related to conditional uses that would apply in that case. And that's the determination we made that warehouse and freight would be appropriate, given the fact that there is no production on site, and it's primarily used for storage of some material, and then the ensuing movement of that material versus production of material, manufacture or production of material, and then movement. And so, in this case, uh, with manufacturing, production, that's where the language speaks specifically to noxious and malicious impacts, and talks about the definition between noxious effects, which talks about noise, water, dust, and the like, which is what many have concerns about as it relates to the proposed facility. However, again, we have determined it to be warehouse and freight, and they, there are other assumptions made regarding the specific material. So, I just want to share some options, given what we've understood and some of the challenges that have been raised regarding the subject property. We do believe that, quite frankly, given the fact that the zoning has been industrial for some time, that the future land use for the property does suggest that it should be, should be commercial. And so, we believe that one potential option in the future would be to zone properties for, you know, that we believe are inappropriately, that aren't consistent necessarily with the future land use, to allow for this change, which the city could initiate. But, one of the options also that we listed here was a text amendment that would be more specific about regulating goods and the like that we were seeing here. There have been different trends in the industry since 2000, quite frankly, and it's been, the zoning ordinance is due for an update. And so, I think language related to some of this activity that we've been seeing recently would help us in order to address some of these needs that maybe weren't identified in the year 2000. So, option two would also be a text amendment. However, we believe that in order to follow through on that, we could potentially review those industrial zone properties throughout the city and look for a land use that may be, land use and zoning, primarily zoning, that may be more appropriate, given the fact that many of the, in many cases, these areas are abutting residential areas. And I think that's just traditionally how some of those definitely evolved over the, um, over the years and in years past with industrial and defined industrial residential properties adjacent to each other. So, just a little bit about what's happened to date. We did, uh, there was an appeal made to the verification letter that was, that was issued to the, to the property owner. I did respond to the letter on that same day, confirming that we believe that the zoning would be appropriate for the activity. The next step for that individual or other applicants would be to, well, in this case, the individual that has made the appeal and we responded to is, they have the ability to go to the zoning board of adjustment, either in November, December, or the following months. We have 30 days once we've gotten that request to appeal to the zoning board of adjustment to place that in a digital and to have a meeting. So, that is one option as well. And the zoning board of adjustment does have the ability to, uh, to make a determination of the zoning classification other than what was made previously, and we certainly will provide that, provide that opportunity as well. So, with that, any questions on me?
Counsel.
Any questions from counsel?
Mr. Howard, what is your recommendation? Is to, I, what I believed I heard you say was that our current ordinance or zoning does require some updates and some recommendations so that we can apply throughout the city, no matter where, to have better control over the effects that it has in the neighboring community if it's within the city limits. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, ma'am, that is what you heard. I believe that that is the, that is a preferred course of action. I believe that we should go a step further and begin to have the city initiate rezonings. I know that that's been something that's been attempted in the past and wasn't necessarily embraced. However, I believe that that would be appropriate to even have the city initiate some of these rezonings to ensure that we can protect the integrity and health of offer of some of these neighborhoods.
So that the public knows that they're, the viewing public, the council, uh, has not seen or reviewed the existing item that came forth. There was no need for it because it fell in all the right categories as the existing ordinances are written. So, therefore, they don't have any type of jurisdiction over what has been done at this time. And the only course of action is for citizens to go through the ZBA and not the council on this issue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I for one would love to see you move forward with your recommendations to bring our ordinances up to date and more current than they are from previously written. We're growing, we're growing all over the city in every direction, and we certainly don't want to impede or restrict on existing neighborhoods or people that have lived here. And so, I see it as the appropriate route to go is to ask you to look into and make some recommendations for council to prevent this from happening in the future.
Rugby.
So, basically, in a nutshell, just for the judge of public, he's gonna be able to do this at this, at this time probably, unless the board overturns this, and then it would come back to us as a council, correct?
No.
Us as a council, though, don't we have an option of, after this is in place and everything's going over there, we can come back with something about nuisance?
Okay, so, the action, if this item were to go to the ZBA, they'd be the final authority on the decision related to the zoning. To your second point, yes, the council, if there are changes to the zoning ordinance, it actually come before this body for approval, yes. And items related to nuisances-
But it doesn't affect the one that's in place?
No, it does not.
Is it true that the zoning board of adjustments decision can be appealed to a court of record?
That is correct.
Okay, so if that means-
Which is outside of this board.
That was my question.
Right, which is outside of the realm of actually this, your jurisdiction. But yes, you can appeal it to a higher authority.
And if there is, after this thing begins to work, if there's problems and they can prove damages, then it could be taken to the courts of appeal, couldn't it?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you're recommending in these options a rewriting or better definitions within the zoning ordinance, do you, are you acknowledging that there is weakness in the existing zoning ordinance?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Or confusion in the existing zoning ordinance?
There could be further clarification in the zoning. I think the other thing is that, again, trends have changed. I don't think anybody was thinking about fracking of sand in 2000. I wasn't here, so you all may have been. But I believe that there are trends in development activity that need to be considered, obviously. And I think that there are, it doesn't really account for that in the current zoning ordinance.
So, you don't think the current zoning ordinance addresses the issue of nuisance clearly?
I believe it does, I believe it does in light of activities or goods being produced on site. It really speaks to that when it, as it relates to manufacturing, production. But when the assumption is being made here that items that are being brought to the site are not noxious and they're not hazardous, they're assuming that those are clean, and it doesn't speak to the issue of how you address that necessarily, other than when they talk about waste materials.
And can you tell us why TCQ is involved in this if there's no hazard at all with this kind of activity?
Well, TCQ has a responsibility, like, of all activities of the sort, and to make a determination. And so, that's sort of outside of purview of the city when there's issues that potentially may threaten the environment. They have that authority to ensure that the health, their health, health, welfare of the residents is being protected. And so, we do defer to their authority as it relates to items of some.
Thank you.
We were not thinking of this in 2000, we wouldn't even think of this in 2012. This is a new deal. Johnny?
I was just gonna add, and I'm gonna wait till, till Lee makes his presentation, but I wanted to make sure and keep us all legit. Now, it was brought to my attention even yesterday, even visiting with the opponent, that Ms. Grant said you're a partner in this, so I wanna make sure-
No, sir.
I understood that you were, so if they-
Can I clarify that?
If they gave me wrong information, I apologize, but yeah.
I think it would be important, Mayor, for me to clarify my position in this.
Well, let me, let me finish mine.
Well, you've, you've made a strong assertion, so-
And that's what I understood, I understood. So, I just wanted to make sure that you're okay. I mean, if that's the case, fine, and not, I'm trying to protect you is what I'm trying to do, okay? But my question is, and I am very, it is my district, and I've heard from numerous, numerous people, and I appreciate the folks, even from the Santa Rita area that have called me for invoice their concern. But, now, before Lee makes his presentation, have you guys even talked, have you folks even talked about, I like the idea of the, maybe a land swap type scenario? I don't, you haven't, you didn't mention that here, so I, I'm interested in that. If we can possibly move it somewhere else, I'm all for it, but it wasn't mentioned, I wanted, I want that conversation-
It's not relevant to the agenda item, though.
Okay, but I just wanted to throw that in there, that it wasn't in there in this discussion, so.
That's correct. I mean, it's outside of the realm of what we're discussing today, and that's really outside of my purview as it relates to, you know, land swaps and the like. However, that may be a likely option that you all may entertain of the, the property owner for that matter. However, that's not, that's not within the purview of this discussion.
I don't see that it's far out because it says classifications and processes, specifically as it relates to the proposed sand transloading. So, I don't see that he's very far out of line by asking about land swaps.
Certainly, but that wouldn't be something that we would, we would handle as far as-
Elizabeth, you wanna take a minute?
Yes. For those that don't know, I'm an employee of Texas Pacifico Railroad, which is the railroad through the city of San Angelo that proceeds on down to Presidio. It is a property and tract that's owned by the state of Texas, and the company that I'm employed by is the operator of that. I have no ownership position in Texas Pacifico and merely an employee. In my position, I work with a number of customers that are looking for transportation on the track as Mr. Fluger has in this, serving, serving this area. My company has no relationship with Mr. Fluger other than the requirement to provide transportation services to and from his site. There has been some talk of a partnership that has gone nowhere with our management. So, at this time, we're, we have the obligation to Mr. Fluger, as we do any other developer on the rail, to provide transportation as we are part of a national transportation network.
Ms. Fluger, I'd like you to come up and make your presentation, sir.
My pleasure, sir.
And Lisa, you might need to hit him a little bit. You can hit him, okay, Patrick, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel. I think I'm, uh, I'm gonna repeat just a little bit here, but I'll try to do it very, very quickly. And, uh, so I'm starting with the, with the property itself. It's 10 acres total. I leased five acres, and I own five acres. And that's what it looks like right there. Now, let's see if I can live in one. Uh, the property itself, it was the rail yard from 1909 to 1962. It's got 4,000 feet of track on it. As Ms. Grant said, this track, most of the track is owned by the state of Texas, leased by Texas Pacifico. Uh, the track's been dormant for 40 years. And, uh, clarify one thing, what Patrick said. The track, the property does not affront any streets except for 72 feet on the very east side. It gets to Hill Street 72 feet wide, and that, that little strip is, is 330 feet long. So, you have to go 330 feet to get to a street from this property. And it's bordered on all sides by ML zoning. So, what I did, I did a 360. I figured some of the, some of you probably haven't sat in the middle of this property and looked around. Uh, this is looking east. If you look right into the right where you see those cemetery trees, might be something appropriate about that. That's where the, that's where the 72-foot-wide strip is going into Hill Street. What you'll notice on the back of all of these, all these locations is there's a lot of graffiti, and they're just big buildings, and there's no way to see the streets from where you are in the middle of this particular track. You're basically looking just at the back of a lot of big metal buildings and storage areas. Permitted uses ML, he went through that. This is the property itself. It's bounded on all sides by other ML zoning properties. There are, there's residential on the far east, a nice residential area. Then it L-shapes down, and then there's some over in Santa Rita on the other side of Ape Street. But around the property itself, it's all ML. There's no residential abutting this property at all. Patrick went through this. Obviously, when I first started this project, what I was trying to do, oh, I'm Lee Fluger, I'm sorry. And I, and I live, I live in Santa Rita, in your district, and I-
Yes, sir.
And I office at the Caxx Hotel in Johnny's district. And I own several pieces of property that previously were owned by the Santa Fe Railroad and operated by Santa Fe Railroad. That's why I'm associated with, with these properties. You asked why I went to see the, obviously, what I've been trying to do, I've been trying to figure out what I can do with this property. It's sitting there vacant, and I'd like to do something with it. So, first I asked the city, then I asked the TCQ on advice that this could be controversial, and I need to know whether this was something that could possibly be done. So, I went to the TCQ, and they said, yes, it could be done. There are a lot of transloading products that can be used there. There's piped drilling mud, the most controversial is sand, and 90% of the rail today is sand product, so that's probably the most logical use for this property. That's what I'm gonna talk about the management today. Sand source, this is called Northern White sand. It's totally pure when it's processed. It comes from Minnesota and Wisconsin by train. It arrives in enclosed tank cars, or rail cars, and it's conveyed with a, with a conveyor, like you see right there, and it goes from the tank car to the, to the truck. The tank top, um, excuse me, the rail car is completely enclosed. The sand drops about six inches from the rail car to the conveyor. The conveyor is completely enclosed, and it drops the sand into a completely enclosed truck. There was some controversy, or some thought processes earlier that the trucks that are carrying this were like the dump trucks you see in the construction site that carry $5 a yard material. This sand costs about $120 to $160 a ton. And so, they're very protective about, one, letting any other impurities get to it and losing any of it. Here, what you see, they're dropping the sand into the top of a small porthole in the top of the truck. As soon as the truck is full, they close the top of the truck. This is, this is the conveyor, it's completely enclosed, and you'll notice on the right-hand side of there, there's a vacuum dust collector that collects the dust that might have been generated during the trip down here. Again, here's the transloading process. This sand is cleaned, sorted for size, washed multiple times, and dried, and then loaded into these enclosed railroad cars. That's all done at the mine. At the transloading site, wherever it may be, here or, or- At the transloading site, wherever it may be, here or anywhere else along the railroad, the sand is transferred from an enclosed rail car to an enclosed truck using an enclosed conveyor. In terms of this property, there's no manufacturing, no processing, no mixing, no storing, and no selling done to the sand. You heard that, no storing. There was some comment about storing in one of Patrick's deal for light manufacturing. There's no storing, TCEQ says you don't store. The business model that we're working on right now, and really, if you could understand what this process is, whoever works the process is, doesn't own the product. The product's owned by the mines and it's sold to the frac people, I mean, to the oil company. What the transloader does is very much like the checkout guy at the grocery store that, or the bagger that helps your wife take the groceries to the car. Her groceries in her cart, he moves them from the cart to her trunk to help her. That's what we do. We just move the sand from the rail car to the truck. I say "we," I'm saying whoever the transloader may be. What we're, what this business model, it looks like to do if I'm trying to interest somebody to be operable, operating this deal, is about 150 rail cars a month. These cars are delivered, called switches, and those switches would be made between midnight and 5:00 AM. The length of time that a switch would block a city street, that's Highland Street coming in there, would be about three minutes on, if you have eight switches a month to do 150 cars, that's 19 cars at a switch. I couldn't get the data for the other because it would take longer if there were fewer switches. This is important, none of the 3,950 feet of railroad track that's gonna be used to transload from is adjacent to any street, nor does it cross any street. A train that crosses a street would be to deliver the cars. This is the, this is the model for sand truck activity. Been a lot of conversation about trucks. And there've been conversations about these trucks are gonna weigh 150,000 pounds. They don't quite, they don't quite get up to that level. They carry 20 tons of sand, takes five trucks to unload one rail car. In this business model, there's 750 truckloads, that's 24 trucks a day. That's an average of one truck an hour. It takes six minutes to load the sand into a truck. That's the average. Here are the dust concerns. There's a lot of dust concern. And this is a true concern here. There's some other things, other concerns I've been hit up that, that by cleaning the mesquite trees off of that lot and putting the cliche rock on it, that I was, I was doing something for global warming, so I won't address that. But, but the dust concerns are real. It's controlled by the TCEQ. The fracs end itself, two different deals. And we, a lot of people talk about Barnhart. Barnhart's got a water problem, TCEQ says you've gotta water the cliche. They don't have any water at Barnhart, and they're not watering the cliche. But it makes a mess, and I agree with that. That's a difference in operation. If you would perceive that there are some people in town, if you compare Barnhart to some people in town that don't mow their grass and keep trash out in the front yard, and say, well, you can't do another subdivision because there are people in town that don't manage their business right. It's not the way to look at it. You gotta look at what is available in the market. Today's market is you don't pollute. So they have systems, they have rail cars that are being closed, they have conveyors that are enclosed, and they have trucks that are enclosed. They don't want the sand to be spread and have a polluting problem. So the sand's processed and cleaned at the mine, again, it's encapsulated in conveyor trough. That conveyor trough has a dust collector on it. It's a very short process time, to load a truck is six minutes. That's how much time this sand sees the light a day, and there's no sand stored on the site. In fact, TXPF wants you to, if you do have any spillage, they're, they really prefer very much that you clean all that up with vacuums. Cliche dust's a problem. On this, on this site, it's 330 feet till you get to a street. And then the yard dust is by regulation, TCEQ has to be controlled with dust suppressants or water. The traffic, in fact, they got two bunches of traffic. Another issue, it's a big issue for the neighborhoods. Right now, there's 8,000, over 8,000 cars a day going down Bryant. The truck traffic, there's 3,200 trucks a day going down Bryant, and the business model says that we will add 24 trucks a day to that. Another area that some of the folks have shared with me is trucks driving through the neighborhood. I think you know that it's prohibited, you can't drive trucks through the neighborhood. But the drivers that will be coming to this site to load sand are drivers that know where it is and know how to get there. They won't get lost and wander through the deal, through the neighborhood. The people that wander through the neighborhood are third-party drivers that pick up a load in Washington DC and start bringing it in here in that 3 o'clock in the morning. They don't know where they are, and they're trying to find some other business. Queuing of trucks on the street was a question. This site is 10 acres, it'll handle all the trucks that would ever be used, and they won't ever be on the street. Today, there is queuing on Hill Street because trucks arrive at 3 o'clock in the morning, and the gates are shut where they're gonna deliver their product. This is the neighborhood impact. What these pictures are gonna show you, that from the neighborhood, you can't see the site. This, I took a picture from the street looking toward the site, and this is what you see. You see, it's 330 feet, this is where the entryway would be on I Street. But basically, all you see are big metal buildings. You can't see the activity that's gonna be going on on the site itself. And this is where I took the pictures from going across here. The economic impact of this project, it'll be 18, in our business model, 18 new jobs, estimated payroll of $939,000. That's, are there any questions? But anyway, I look, let me say, just opine. I look forward to working with you any way we could on this to minimize the impact. I'm doing everything I can to minimize the impact. I'm buying, I'll be sure whether I do it or whoever does it has the best equipment, they keep the dust down, everything's operated correctly. I've been, I've been working, this is kinda different for me, I've been working on quality of life projects for 40 years in San Angelo. So this is completely different kind of ballgame for me. But this won't be a change if I'm doing it right, and management will be sure it's done right.
Thank you, Ms. Fluger. Anyone from the council have questions, Lee?
I do, for, just for clarity. You talked about the park where you actually transload the sand.
Yep.
Talk more about the traffic issue, that you will block traffic for how long? Because you've got, what is it, Washington Drive, you've got Irving Street, you've got... So am I, do I understand this, you've got a big, over a long train coming in with boxcars, and if they pull over to the side to unload the sand, you'll be blocking that much traffic even all the way, you know?
No.
I don't understand that part.
Okay. There were some questions, and I was addressing some questions I had heard earlier, that the trains would block Bryant Freeway, and they would block Highland Street whenever the sand was being unloaded. And all I was saying is, the only time that a train, any trains associated with activity on this site will block a road will be when the cars are being delivered to the site. And that's between midnight and 5:00 in the morning. Once the cars are delivered to site, there's 3,950 feet of track that the cars can just sit on, and they won't move, and they don't block any streets, because this track is not adjacent to any streets at all, except 330 feet from Hill Street, which is 72 feet wide. Does that explain it?
No, sir, because what if you got a train that's got, I don't know, 50 boxcars, or 50 cars? I'm not seeing where you would not block Washington, you would not block Irving, you would not block Chapman Street.
When you deliver the train, when you, like when a train goes through town, it hits all those crossings.
Right.
When a train delivering cars to this site comes to this site, it will pass all of those crossings. If they do eight switches a month, it will take, the train will move at five miles an hour to deliver it. A train is gonna be 1,000 feet long. It will take three minutes for a train to cross any of those crossings to get to this site. Once it is at this site, the boxcars are at this site, they won't be touching any streets. There are no streets around this site, adjacent to this site, I hope that's right.
Rodney?
Ms. Fluger, thanks for explaining a lot of this to us, but I'm pretty familiar with this transloading. I've sold a couple of properties to companies that are doing this up on the north side. My question to you, and I hate asking this question, but I know the public wants me to ask this question, is why would you do this in the middle of town when you own, you own a bunch of property up on the north side? Why don't we do it up on the north side? Whereas it's-
As I said, Rodney, first of all, it's one of the many properties that I own.
Yes.
It's got nearly 4,000 feet of track on it. And, I mean, it's, the configuration of the property is ideal for doing some sort of rail associated activity at this place. As Johnny said, if we have a better way of doing it, or you wanna trade this for some other property somewhere else, I'm open to any suggestion. Nobody's ever approached me with a specific deal that would do that. But it's kinda like having a rice farm and saying, well, why are you farming rice there? Well, I'm farming rice there because that's the best use for that rice farm. It's not a, it's not a cow farm, it's better as a rice farm. Or take one of these ranches out here, it's not gonna be a, it's never gonna be a rice farm.
Well, I have to disagree with you there, because this thing is right in the middle of town, and I know that, you know, when you talk about 24 truckloads a day, that's... If we send somebody up on Hughes Street right now, I know it's way more than 24 a day.
Well, it certainly is, but this track will not handle more than that.
I know, but you can say that, but once you're in there and you're doing that, it's done. You can bring in 100 trucks a day, which I have a feeling will be close to. And see, that's where, that's where I'm trying, and I'm pro-business. I want you to do this business up on the north side of town. I just don't want you to do it right in the middle of all these houses, that's the only thing. That's why I'm sitting there, that's why I asked if there was anything that us as a council could do on nuisance. And I hate to do that to you, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna put in all the infrastructure on this thing, and then I have a feeling that everybody's gonna be fighting you all the way along the way, and they're gonna... Hopefully, we would eventually stop this after the sand, and you've wasted all that money in. That's why I just, I'm not understanding a lot of this. I have a hard time seeing this unless you really think that you're gonna get this through.
Well, Rodney, I'm here, I'm here going through the process-
Right.
...with you folks. I'm asking, I assume the right questions. I assume that my responses I'm receiving from the city and I'm receiving from the TCEQ are correct, and I'm just trying to figure out what I can do with it. If you get a piece of, if you get a piece of property and you wanna develop it or do something with it, first thing you do is you go out and find out what you can do with it. You ask everybody, and you find out what the rules are, and you live within the rules.
But usually try to take the path of least resistance, is it would be my plan? Is that, and I know if I'm gonna get a battle, and I'm gonna spend millions of dollars, and it's gonna cost me all this time and money, when I have another piece of property I could do it on, I think I would go to the other piece of property. That's what, that's the way I would look at it as.
That would be easier, Rodney, if you find me another piece of property that's got 4,000 feet of TXPF track.
But don't you, off of Schwartz Road and North Bell Street, don't you have more acreage than this right there? And that's on the main yard right there?
I have acreage that don't have the track.
Well, the track's right there beside the acreage.
Well, it's gotta be on the acreage to use it.
That's the only question I have.
Further questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Fluger. Thank you for bringing business to San Angelo. And I had the same concerns, as I spoke with you before, I've had the same concerns about it being where it is. And yes, the track's been there, railroad's been here since 1850. And that's where a lot of things were offloaded years ago. Our city has grown, our city has grown tremendously over the last 100 years.
My questions and concern, I've tried to go about this visiting with you. You've addressed questions, you've told me certain things. I still have concerns with reference to the overflow. I've gone out, driven your property, your employees met me, and they were very nice, very cordial. I've also driven to Barnhart to look at operations over there, what they are or not doing. Went in some businesses there and had the pleasure of having to wipe the seats out before I could sit down because of the sand in the overflow, and I'm not exaggerating. I've taken pictures of, that I'd like to share with the rest of the council, shared it with this side, taken pictures of the chutes, the conveyor belts, to just sit and watch and try to get an idea. I'm in disagreement with planning that this fit in light manufacturing, because it does produce health hazards, noise hazards, and sitting idling diesel trucks smell hazard. And where you have a lot of nice homes, but a lot of them don't have central heat and air, and they have to leave their windows open or their doors open. They're gonna get the sift of any overflow that is out there, and it could cause health problems, especially with anyone with any type of lung disorder or ailment. If you go west of the overflow, and in some of these pictures that I've taken that I have here today, you can see the green bushes are just covered in the overflow, the silica sand and dusty, and it takes away that beauty. So the folks that live on the west of the property, you know, fearful of the float and whatever it may damage aesthetically as well as health-wise to their property. Then I went downtown to the museum, the river. We have spent as a city millions of dollars to improve our downtown, the river, the River Walk for tourism, the fort, the bosque that we put down there. And just in looking at vehicles and stuff there in Barnhart that are just covered in a thick sand, my concern comes to the downtown area, and what are we doing to allow a business? And yes, it could be placed anywhere that didn't flow right into the direction of any of these areas, and it's going to. And what are we doing to ourselves, seems like we're shooting ourselves in the foot to damage our beautiful museum, our beautiful River Walk that's not known as a River Walk, but it's quickly being known as one. And that concerns me, and I fully understand what Stan has done, and the manager feels like it's within the light. I just happen to disagree, but that will have its due process. So my concern is pleading to you about the possible other location, because this location can still handle freight, offloading of freight that is contained and concealed in boxes or shipment, you know, other businesses that might be blooming up or supplies, or the oil fields or whatever because of the ideal situation of the sperm. But my concern with the chutes, with the-
Conveyor.
Thank you, the conveyor that takes the sand to the chutes, there's still considerable overflow. And in driving- And in driving the property since you first started this, you know, back in March, I've not seen any water sprinkler or system or suppression. And I am concerned as to, and I've asked the city planning manager to explain to me why we're not requiring paved surface or paved on the road, the street, where they'll be going out to Avenue, Avenue I is on the other side, so it's Hill Street. Is that not required, that you pave that? And if it is required, are you willing to pave that?
Yes, ma'am. It's designed to be paved. And obviously, given, I, I've got a ranch and I don't have any sand on it, but I have a lot of that white stuff everywhere. The, but that's primary, I, I do believe that's caliche, caliche dust over at Barnhart. And I do believe it can be controlled, or at least that's what I'm told. So, do I agree with you? I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, it's, if you want to make a park out of it, talk to me.
You'll need new parts.
You know, I mean, tell me what you want to do with it. That's what, I've done things for the city for forty years. And I know whenever I first bought it, I talked to Rick and he was looking at getting a fire hy, fireplace, I mean, a...
Station.
Fire station. He said, hey, I'm glad you got that because I know I can trade with you. I can get it from you. And I said, yeah, you know, whatever you need, you just, but to me, the council needs to be proactive and needs to decide the importance and what the city can do. Y'all are the gorilla here. I just happen to own that piece of property. That's, that's all I'm doing. And I'm trying to work within the rules of what you've told me I can do. And I'm, and I'm going to build it out, if, if it's built out, I don't know what we're going to do with it. Elizabeth and I have talked a lot about other products too. The one you want to talk about now is sand because that's the controversial one. But there are other products, and when we first started this thing, there was questions about this. And both of us said, hey, if it's not sand, there's going to be other products that we can unload right there.
I understand that, and the...
Did we?
Yes, sir. I, I think I did tell you that.
Yeah.
So thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Problem being is the sand, even though contained in a rail car, then it comes out, it's subject to the open air elements and it shoots down into, from the conveyor belt to the chutes, it shoots down. There's still that element of it spraying out, falling out or whatever. When I speak about it from a health issue, I am one person that does have a lung ailment. And just going to Barnhart yesterday, I got a froggy voice and, and, but it, that's what it does, is it causes that problem that I have just first. So I definitely wouldn't want to live anywhere near this. No offense to anyone in the west or the east side, Saturday or either side, that's why I wouldn't live there. But if I already lived there, I would be racing cane because of a health issue. I would love to, see you have the business, and I would love to see you put it on some different acreage and try to work out something to get rail or swap the land with someone else. I would love to see that happen to prevent what I'm afraid that we would have. Thank you. Those are my concerns.
I've been polishing that diamond too.
Yes, I know you have.
The last forty years.
I, you know, I encourage, I wouldn't want to be on the ZBA board right now. So, thank you.
You what?
I wouldn't want to be on the ZBA board right now.
Further comments? Don?
Elizabeth?
I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of these comments here from some other people later. I mean, I don't want to hog the...
It's not appropriate for me to ask Mr. Fluger any questions. He's a potential customer of mine. I'm here to discuss the appropriateness of light manufacturing versus heavy manufacturing.
And there's, there's no argument between this council. I don't think that this is, this should be heavy manufacturing. If nothing else for the traffic, that, the traffic's the main thing I have a problem with. It's not even so much the dust. It's the amount of trucks that are going to come in there and are going to park there. And, you know, when you said one every, one every hour, well, they come in in groups of six and eight. I see them every day out in Wall. They come in in six and eight at a time and they're driving that, and that's, those are two very small streets that they're turning off of Bryant onto. So that one's a four lane, but it's a very narrow four lane. And then when it goes on to Hill Street, well, it's very small two lanes. So it's going to cause big problems for those people that live in the neighborhood, huge problems. It boggles my mind that this would ever fall in light manufacturing. It would never, and I think that you even would agree to that, that it shouldn't be light manufacturing. You're playing by the rules, but the rules are flawed.
Well, the manufacturing side of it, I do believe that you're correct. There are, there are multiple, there are dozens of trucks that go down Hill Street every day. I would, I would argue with you on that. I don't think... Well, ask the neighbors. I, I, I don't. He's here asking, well...
Well, sorry, those are dozens to hundreds.
Well, it, they're running, you ask, you ask the neighbor. It won't be hundreds, but you ask the neighbor.
It could be a hundred. Hughes Street has...
You can solve it.
Well, no, I can't. If I could, I mean, Johnny...
How, Lee, how does the, does the train come further?
I think you do five a day, don't you?
We do about five a day.
Okay. Usually a hundred cars. Well, seventy-five hundred cars a train.
And when we pull empties back, it can be a hundred and twenty, as many as a hundred and twenty, coming, coming back to the east.
Johnny, do you have a question?
Lee, and in all due respect to you, because I know you've done a lot for the community. You are a pillar of the community. You've done, you know, but one, one of the concerns that I did hear, and I think it was brought up a while ago, is the paving of it. I think you're only going to pave the entrance, not the whole ten acres, just the entryway. So I wanted to clarify that.
That's correct. If I misspoke, I'm sorry.
No, you said it right. And, and I think that's where the dust problem comes up. I think, you know, you get eighteen wheelers, and I totally agree that if we had the foresight, I would have requested this zone be changed a long time ago and not allow, you know, who, who knew you were going to come up with that idea or somebody's going to come up with this sand idea? But my other question is, and Patrick, maybe you can answer it. I know that Avenue GHIJK, you mentioned all those, that they have a, have vehicles that pivot three hundred tons. You didn't mention Irving Street. Does Irving Street also fall under that category of the large, do you know?